Called a meeting to order. So, the Pacific Coast Television has instructed us that the AMP is not working here in the room, but the microphones are working. So, the people at home might be hearing us speak up a little bit, but it's because there's no mic working here in the hall. So, do excuse us if we're doing anything out of the ordinary. I don't think we're used to having the microphones off in this room.
Raise their hand if they can't hear.
She said, because she couldn't hear, that, you know, to have people raise their hand if they can't hear. So, we'll try to speak up if you can't hear us.
Does that mean the podium one is not working also?
Right.
Okay, so people at the podium, if you're coming up to speak, please make sure to speak up there as well. So, please, do we have roll call?
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Irvin?
Here.
Councilmember DeGruy?
Present.
Mayor Protem Nyheart?
Present.
Mayor Stone?
Here.
And do we have a closed session report this evening?
No reportable action.
All right, thank you. And next is salute to the flag led by Councilmember DeGruy.
Stand.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the consent calendar. Any comments or motions from council? Mayor Protem?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Councilmember Irvin?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, please vote. And that passes five to zero. And next on the agenda is a special presentation, which is from Doug Jaquel? 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 Okay. Please come forward.
I've got a presentation we're going to turn on here. That's the...
So, for those of you at home, this presentation is about the 2014 runway closures at SFO.
Thank you. And can you hear me?
Not working.
They aren't working, but they're working for the home audience. So, you should still use it.
Well, councilmembers, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
I want to move it up a little bit. We do know, we're used to them here, so that'll work.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to join you this evening. I'm also joined by Ara Balian from our noise abatement office. My name is Doug Jaquel, and I'm the spokesman for the San Francisco Airport. And I wanted to just take you through a brief presentation outlining some runway construction activity we have planned at the airport for next summer. The reason why we wanted to reach out to you at this time to talk about it is because for a brief period during the summer runway construction, we will see a change in how aircraft are being routed at San Francisco. But to start, it's important just to kind of go over as a refresher the layout of our runways. SFO is made up of a total of four runways, and it's a pair of two parallel runways that intersect with one another. Normally, we use the runways as follows. Runways 28 left and 28 right are used for primarily arrivals. Thank you. So, runways 28 left and 28 right are the primary runways we use for arrivals. This would have aircraft coming in over the San Mateo Bridge in for a landing. These two runways have already had their construction activity completed. What we're going to talk about in the closures that we're going to see next summer affect the other two runways, what we'd call one left and one right. These are primarily the runways that we use for departing traffic. So, the project is called an RSA or a runway safety area. This is a safety zone that surrounds the runway on either end, and really, the goal of a runway safety area is to provide additional threshold space for an aircraft to come to a stop. So, in other words, if an aircraft overshoots its runway on a landing, or has an aborted takeoff and needs additional space to come to a stop, the runway safety area is designed to provide that additional cushion of space. Now, as I've mentioned, we've already completed our RSA work on runways 28 left and 28 right. So, those already feature extended thresholds. And for those, we had enough sufficient space, we had enough raw distance in those runways, to make up that additional threshold space. However, for runways one left and one right, because they're shorter in distance, we also have the option to install what's called EMAS, or Engineered Material Arresting System. And we've got a photo of this in action. This is a picture of an EMAS system at an airport in West Virginia. EMAS is essentially the best analogy I can think of. It's like a runaway truck ramp, okay? It's a cellular material that's designed to collapse predictably, such that if an aircraft overshoots a runway, it would go into this EMAS, and essentially, the landing gear would sink gently into this sandy-like material. And this would help bring the aircraft to a stop. So, here's a perfect example of an EMAS system being used successfully. Now, obviously, this is a system that we will install and hope that we never have to use, of course. So, the runway safety areas that are being installed in here are a federally mandated project. This is a project set out by the FAA. All airports that have to install runway safety areas, and there's about 40 airports, including SFO, around the country that need to install runway safety areas, we've been given until the end of 2015 to complete that work. As I've mentioned, we've already completed the work for two of our four runways. 28 left and 28 right already have their work completed. This final phase is planned for the summer of 2014, and that's really what we're here to talk about. We looked at a lot of different runway closure options in order to install this EMAS at the ends of the two runways. And we looked at different phases, looked at retaining partial use of the runways. These phasing options would require at least six months to complete, and they would have aircraft actually taking off over an active construction site, which we did not like. In addition, only 40% of our departing flights could have used those shortened runways. So, we really didn't view this on a variety of levels as a very effective option, primarily for safety. The option we wound up selecting was to install EMAS on both ends simultaneously, and to close both of those runways for a period of four and a half months. This would have all of our flights, both arrivals and departures, using the remaining two runways, 28 left and 28 right. The other good part about this, this uses an air traffic control procedure that the folks in our FAA tower are already familiar with. They've already operated under this configuration before. So, in our mind, the second option was the best option because it got the work done in the shortest amount of time possible, with the fewest question marks for safety. So, as I've mentioned, we've already done preparatory construction work for this project. And our plan is to close these two runways beginning May 17th of next year, and to have them closed through September of 2014. We're going to do this construction work to install this EMAS round the clock. The crews will be working 24/7 on this project. The main reason why we chose the May through September period is because this is a time of year where we have the least amount of precipitation. And because a lot of this work requires asphalt and paving to cure, this is really the best time to do it. I would say that although this plan calls for about four and a half months of construction, there is cushion built into this, all right? So, there is a possibility that, working around the clock, we may get it done sooner than the end of September 2014. And as I've mentioned, we've factored in all of the air traffic control issues as well. In terms of delays, what we might expect to see during this period, you know, currently today, on a clear day, we had a beautiful weather day today. We had Air Force One coming in today, had real nice weather for that. And on a day like today, at our peak, the busiest times of the day at the airport, we need to be able to bring in about 52 to 54 aircraft per hour. That's our maximum. During this closure for four and a half months next summer, we anticipate that our arrival rate will be around 45 to 46 flights per hour. So, there is the possibility during some peak periods of the day that essentially, demand will exceed supply. So, at the periods that I've outlined here, from 11:00 AM to noon, and some periods in the evening, we may have a few more arrivals than our capacity will allow for. So, if we are going to experience delays, it's likely that they may occur during those times of the day. In addition, because we're going to be operating both arrivals and departures on the same two runways, there is the possibility that we may see some departure delays as a result of increased taxi times, because all of our flights are going to essentially go to the ends of those runways and need to wait for arriving traffic before they can take off. So, these are some of the operational impacts that we may be looking at in terms of delays next summer. Now, to mitigate this, the FAA is going to assume temporary control of the flight schedules at SFO during these runway closures. At about this time of year, the airlines will start submitting their preliminary summer schedules to the FAA. The FAA will then look at these airline schedules and have the ability to make adjustments to suit that demand that I just showed you. So, in other words, if a particular carrier scheduled too many flights during one of those peak demand periods, the FAA would have the ability during this closure to go back to that airline and say, "We need you to flatten this out a little bit. We need you to redistribute some of those flights in order to accommodate the fact that we're going to have two of our runways closed." I would also tell you that we recently announced a new runway procedure. This went into effect on October 1st. It's called CASPER, or Closely Spaced Parallel Runways. It essentially allows us to use our two parallel runways more efficiently during bad weather or low visibility. That's already been in place. When it was raining last week, it certainly helped us out a little bit. And we expect that this new procedure will also help mitigate some of those demand issues that we may see next summer. I want to talk a little bit about the effect that this will have on flight patterns and show you some patterns of aircraft routing and how it'll be affected by this closure. So, here we are. We've got kind of a map of the area. You can see the runway in the lower right corner. And just to show you, today, with runways one left and one right open, these are some typical routings that we see. Aircraft will take off over the bay. Flights going to the Midwest, East Coast, or Europe will get routed as follows. And aircraft that are going to Southern California will make a turn over the peninsula and head south. Now, again, this is only runways one left and one right. Of course, we also have aircraft that depart off of the 28s, heading through what we call the gap over San Bruno and the north end of Pacifica. But with runways one left and one right closed for four and a half months next summer, we'll essentially see these types of patterns go away. And in their place, what we'll see is aircraft going out straight through the gap, like we normally see them. So, traffic to Asian Hawaii will continue to take the pattern that they do. But the difference is that Southern California traffic will get routed through that gap, over the north end of Pacifica, and make a left-hand turn over the ocean to head south. And then, we'll also see traffic going to the Midwest, East Coast, and Europe, making a right turn over Highway 101 and going over the bay. We call that a shoreline departure. So, this is really the pattern of flights that we will see for four and a half months next summer. And we call this a straight 28 operation. It essentially means we're using runways 28 left and 28 right for all of our flights during this period. Operating strictly on runways 28 left and 28 right is not a new procedure for us. In fact, we actually go to this configuration quite a bit based on windy conditions. So, there are certain times of the year where you get that strong wind blowing through the gap. And when it blows strongly enough, we'll actually, based on weather, operate all of our flights using these runways. Just for a little snapshot, looking at this year, these are the months that we're going to have this closure next summer. And just taking a look at May through September this year, this shows you how many days in each of these months, we already operated using only runways 28 left and 28 right. So, you can see months of May and June must have had stronger wind conditions, because more than half of those months, we've actually already been operating under this configuration. To talk a little bit about evening operations, I just want to give you a brief snapshot of where these aircraft are going and what time they operate at. So, we have our traditional Asian Hawaii departures going through the gap, but flights to Southern California tend to wind down by about 9:00 PM. So, what you'll see is the aircraft that are primarily being routed over the north of Pacifica will start winding down around 9:00 PM. And what's really left after that, the bulk of our departures from 10:00 PM on are what we would call the red-eye departures. These are your transcontinental flights that go to places like New York, Boston, Washington, and some flights to Europe as well. So, this is really what we'll see in terms of late-night departures. And finally, at very late hours, around 2:00 AM or later, aircraft actually will take off in the opposite direction. They'll take off over the bay towards the San Mateo Bridge. We call that a quiet bridge procedure over the evening. So, overall, the goals of this runway safety area program are to improve the safety of all of our runways. This is a federally mandated project. One of the unique things about SFO is we're kind of landlocked. You know, we've got the bay on one side, we've got Highway 101 on the other side. There's really no room to grow our airport's footprint. So, from facilities to runways, any solution we need to come up with, we have to achieve it within our current footprint. And that's really what's driving this need to close two of those runways. Every now and then, I get asked about whether or not we would build another runway into the bay. And you know, in the '90s, we took a very long, hard look at doing that. We wound up not being able to do it. And after 9/11, traffic dropped off, and it really wasn't necessary anymore. By now, building another runway into the bay would make our airport too expensive to operate at. It would probably cost over $10 billion to do, and it would essentially make SFO too expensive for any airline to operate at. So, we really do have to look within our current footprint to find solutions. And obviously, one of our big goals is to be fully compliant with the FAA standards. They require that airports complete their work by 2015. This project gives us enough cushion to have it done a year in advance. We have recently announced these closures, and we've got some resources available. We've got sections on our website that provide good information on this project and what some of the effects will be. So, these are additional resources that are available to the public. And I would add, and I mentioned it earlier, that we do have cushion built into our construction schedule, so that if we do get some precipitation from May to September next summer, we've definitely got the flexibility to adjust for that. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mayor Protem?
The only one that comes to my... And then, that's amazing, and certainly, I've been there. I think we all have. My only real concern is obviously the north end of town. And I'm curious if... I know you're here, and I'm hoping, or I'm sure, that the newspaper will write an article about this because you're presenting here. But I'm wondering if there's some other ways that we might be able, or you can, get that information out, especially over the Fairmont, the areas up at the top? Because we do get complaints still, complaints about the numbers of traffic, the amount of traffic, those sorts of things. If we could let people know that this schedule would change on at least a temporary basis and what the timeframe is, maybe it might mitigate some of that. Some of them, I think, also probably have direct lines to you guys.
Sure. Well, I'd certainly be open to any avenues you think would communicate this best. And really, one of the first steps that we're doing is visiting a forum such as this. So, obviously, you know your city's best, and if you feel there's appropriate forums for us to provide this information, we're open to doing that.
Well, I think you should mail to each of the houses up there. That's the only way I can think of, at least in a certain decibel range.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Irvin?
Thank you very much for the presentation. My concern was also outreach, just making sure that people in those neighborhoods affected are going to be notified in any way they can. And so, I appreciate that being brought up. The other question I had was, during the times last May and June, when you did use the current, the formation that's going to be used, did you have any increase in complaints? Or was there any issues there that we should know, so we can address it?
We'll take a look to see if there's a correlation with our straight 28 operations, and whether there's a relationship between that operation and an increase in complaints. I don't have that, but we'll take a look at that.
Okay, great. And then, one other question is, do you know what... I know you're a spokesman for the San Francisco Airport, but I was wondering if you had any information on the impact... Are any of the other airports in the area carrying out similar changes at their airport?
All of the airports in the Bay Area, San Jose, Oakland, would also be required to implement this FAA standard. So, there are also airports that would need to apply a runway safety area. I'm afraid I don't know what their construction schedule or what their plan is.
Okay.
But what we will do is to see if any of that construction activity might have an impact on our cities up and down the peninsula.
Great, I appreciate that.
I don't expect they will, but we'll double-check that.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember DeGruy?
Well, it's not really a question, but I think those are all great ideas. And the airport noise commission is obviously working on that. And there is a Fairmont Housing Association, which I believe they're tuning in. They're tuning in right now. And to them, this will be rerun several times as well.
Okay, very good.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very thorough, and all great ideas, I think, from my colleagues. And maybe you can have a conversation with staff about maybe how to best connect with the various groups and homeowners' associations that are in the city. And we really appreciate the outreach.
Okay, thank you for having me.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Just while they're tearing down, we do have one public hearing tonight. I didn't have any cards. Which is, our 2013 California building standards have changed, and our staff is here to keep us up to date and in compliance, whenever you're ready, guys.
Good evening, Mayor Stone and City Council members. I'm George White, your planning director. And tonight, I'm joined by Doug Ryder, who's the city's building official to the far right here, and Rich Johnson from Pacifica Fire, to provide our recommendations on the update of the California Building and Fire Codes. As you may know, the state periodically updates its construction codes and requires all local jurisdictions to adopt them, either in their entirety or with local amendments that can be supported by certain legal findings. We recommend that the code be adopted with local amendments, as contained in the ordinance before you this evening. Doug and Rich can speak specifically to the nature of the desired amendments, many of which are holdovers from previous code update cycles. The updated codes will go into effect automatically on January 1st, 2014, even if the city does not take a formal action to adopt them. And that's the reason why we're bringing the updates to you this evening, so that the local amendments that we desire to have as part of this code update continue to be in place and will be in effect on the 1st of next year. I also wanted to mention that any permits that are currently in process, that have been submitted prior to the 1st of 2014, will still be subject to the old codes. And only those permits that are submitted after the 1st of the year will be subject to the new codes. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Doug and Rich for some introductory comments, and then, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on this code update process. Thank you.
Good evening, council... Excuse me. As far as fire code goes, what we have before you is basically the same code as you had in the past. The only thing we do is review the code to make sure that it referred back to the correct sections of the code. So, for most of what you have before you, it is just a change of the chapter numbers within the code. The only additional thing is the additional, the firefighting breathing support systems for high-rise buildings. There are no buildings currently scheduled or even on the horizon that would meet this code. But it's important because of several items. Number one, the geography of the city is very long and narrow. Our staffing is at the minimum we need, and the response times from other communities is a long ways. And typically, in high-rise situations, it takes about one engine company per floor to move equipment. And a system such as this will alleviate much of that task. So, except for this one part of the code adoption, everything else is just a renumbering to reflect the current number of the chapter. No change at all in previous ordinances. The other thing is, we're asking to rescind administrative policy 38. Administrative policy 38 is extremely old policy. It is outdated. It is covered in the code already and has been for at least four code adoptions in the past. And the references cited in this part of this policy are no longer in existence. So, by deleting it, we do nothing, except remove an obsolete and useless section of the administrative policies.
Good evening. And from the building side, I'd like to say that I reiterate that these...
Excuse me, Doug. Doug, could you use the microphone, just for the people at home? Thanks.
Good evening. I'd like to reiterate the fact that these building codes are state law, and they go into effect January 1 of 2014. We're here today because we want to add some additional information. A lot of the amendments that we had to the building code are on the administrative level that have to do with the exploration of permits and give us the process to go after illegal construction or non-permitted construction and carry out the proper means to execute and get those buildings brought into compliance. The building code is, it mentions them, but doesn't have the specifics there. Pacifica has a building ordinance, a building construction hour ordinance that we want to maintain, and the fee schedule reflects to the master fee schedule. And really, the amendments that we have for both the residential code and the building code are strictly about administrative elements that we want to make sure are brought into Other than that, we also want to maintain the fact that we don't allow wood shake or shingle for roofing. And if it's provided on a re-roof, if your existing structure has shakes or shingles on them, you're allowed to put them back if they are fire retardant and rated for fire retardant. And we're also looking for, in the electrical code, the maintenance of equipment due to the salt air. We have a lot of electrical equipment that degrades over the course of time and doesn't take very long to do it. So, there's a couple of issues associated with the electrical code. Other than that, every three years, the rules get more and more demanding as they... to turn the screws on us a little bit more to make it tighter and tighter. The energy code requirements are up about 25% on mandatory measures. And the green building issues go into residential construction additions and remodels. The plumbing code has reduced the flow rates of plumbing fixtures in your home once again, and this time, they've included kitchen faucets. HVA systems are going to be required to be pumped up and the duct tested. This is an additional cost on furniture replacement, that every homeowner should know, that their ducting is going to be needed to be tested by pressurization, and it's called HERS testing. I wanted to address the kitchen remodel, the effects of the new codes associated with the majority of our permits, of course, for residential contractors. A majority of our work in Pacifica is residential remodels and small commercial tenant improvements. Civil Code 1101.1 requires that if you do a bathroom remodel, and if your house was built prior to 1994, there's a requirement to replace all non-compliant plumbing fixtures with compliant fixtures. Not just in the area of work, but throughout your house. So, there's going to be water reduction, and that's, of course, the state is looking to reduce the water reduction. In new code, the ante is way up with the Cal Green mandatory measures, and with energy, like I said, energy going about 20% or 25% higher than was what was required before. We're grouped together. We're going to have to wait for the industry to catch up with the new requirements, and then, the manufacturers and the builders will all get used to how things go. But once again, in 2014, we'll be confronted with a lot of questions, and I'm sure you have some for me, if I'm here to answer them if I can.
Any questions? Councilmember O'Neil?
Okay, is there any sort of outreach or brochures or something we're going to do to homeowners that might be considering, you know, remodeling after the... to homeowners that might be considering, you know, remodeling after the holidays so that they can put this in their budget, loan amounts, or whatever? So like when they come in, we give them a brochure saying da-da-da-da-da-da-da? And these are, we're required by law to do this, correct? We can't, we have no option?
That's what was kind of strange about the way they adopted this. The plumbing fixture replacement law that went into place did not go through the building code process through the Building Standards Commission, but was actually a legislation that took place and has became part of the Civil Code of the State of California. So if your house was built prior to '94, you might want to know that. Certainly, we're going to have, I have a series of handouts that we're in the process of making. They'll be available at the counter. We would hope to have the website updated so that it shows what's here and what's now. But trust me, I'm not an expert on this new code either yet. We're going to learn it as we go, so to speak. But the basic requirements that you see now and the things that I'm talking about are the biggest changes that are in the code for this cycle. So I think the answer is yes, we're going to try to be, have an outreach thing that goes, you know, to discuss the requirements.
Okay. I just didn't want, you know what I mean? They go get a loan for whatever, $25,000, but you've mentioned several things. There are going to be additional costs that maybe they need to get 30 or something.
Yeah.
Okay. And then this duct test, this duct testing, like, how much does that cost and what, how is it done?
You have to hire a HERS, H-E-R-S, HERS raider. And there's only a few in this area that do it. They're charging between $400 and $800 to perform that test. PG&E was in that energy auditing business where they were doing what they called the door-blowing testing, where they pump up the whole house to look for energy leaks. And they were providing that service for a while. I don't know if they're going to continue to do that. I have a couple of meetings, I've been trying to attend as many meetings as I can, about the code and about the programs that are going to be out there. But certainly, you should be aware of the fact that if you're doing a furnace replacement, you used to be able to just replace your furnace. But now you're going to be looking at the duct and making sure that there are no leaks, which makes a lot of sense, though, too. But I wish it wasn't as expensive as it is going to be.
Councilmember Irvin?
Thanks for the presentation. Just to clarify, so this is going to be taking place January 1st, 2014. So anybody currently that has a project will be under the guidelines that are currently existing, and it's not until January?
That's correct.
Okay. And this is state mandated. One of the things I really wanted to point out, what in particular is unique to Pacifica in terms of these building code changes? Or, and anything that we have to do here based on our geography or, you know, our issues that we have in Pacifica?
Well, specifically, the, most of the amendments are about admin portions, additional information that we wanted to bring forth and was originally brought forth by a city attorney to help us in with our administration of the code. When there are questions arose about illegal construction and the enforcement of illegal construction, and making sure that we understood that there's no construction allowed other than seven to eight, I believe, on weekdays, and that grading can't take place in October. And those are, and because of the hillside and landslide location--
Right.
--the grading moratorium and the building moratorium.
Okay, great. And then, this may not, you may not be able to answer this, but I'm just curious, on an average basis, do we have any idea how much more this is going to cost for the typical residential project? Do we have any estimates?
No. And that's one of the reasons that, well, it's one of the reasons that we're defaulting to Cal Green in this particular case, is because we can't justify, we don't have any studies as to what the additional costs are going to be in the relationship to this code yet. The software that develops the energy compliance for this new code hasn't even been issued by the State of California Energy Commission. So we don't even have that yet.
Right.
It's going to, it's going to be a learning curve.
Right. Yeah, frustrating.
It's kind of interesting that the building, plumbing, mechanical, electrical codes, the four that I grew up with when I first started this business, there's now 12, by the way, codes that are enforced by us in the Building Department. When I first came into place, there were four into this business. They kind of remained the same, and the green and energy really cranked it. You haven't seen, we didn't get a new energy code since 2008. They just put a new name on it, or a new number, 2010. But it was virtually the same energy code as 2008. This one is revised. I brought the book, I was going to, I don't know, you probably couldn't have seen it. But they use a double bracket on the side of the page to show changes to the code. When you open the energy code for 2013, virtually every page has double brackets from one end to the other, as they've rewritten this thing entirely. I can come back with you and tell you what the effects are in about six months or a year, depending on the activity.
I'd like to hear that.
Thank you.
I'm happy to do that.
Councilmember DeGruy?
Well, we're talking about outreach to people, even for the airport noise, this is a bigger deal. We thought about how we're doing outreach for this, to let people know, because wouldn't the majority of our houses be made before 1994? Is that the date?
Yeah. But once again, if you've remodeled, if anybody has remodeled or replaced a toilet, the plumbing fixtures and showerheads are identified, easily identified to what their flow is. I'm scrambling to put together the things that are required, and I will do my best to pull some outreach together on this, yes.
In other words, I'm curious, when did legislature come up with this?
I don't know, I didn't vote on it. I didn't, we heard about it afterwards. I actually thought, when I first heard the rumor that it was coming down, I thought it would disappear, because I thought the real estate lobby would step in and do it. The real estate lobby got three years. It's going to be point of sale after 2017. So they got three years in which to have leniency on this ordinance.
Councilmember O'Neill?
It's me.
Oh. Mayor Protem?
You can't tell the difference?
They have close initials here.
Oh, amen. Okay. It goes without saying, Michelle, I assume we went through this all, so you're good.
Yes.
Okay. And I was pretty stunned, living in a house with a wall heater. Well, there's a lot of Pacifica with wall heaters and no furnaces and no ducting and none of that kind of stuff.
Not required on a wall furnace. You're fine with a wall furnace.
And where does solar fit in all of this?
Okay, so the green, on new construction, solar prep is required in a new home. So conduits will be in place, and the circuit breakers, as well as EV charging, so that your service, your main electrical panel, will have room for EV charging stationed in it, too. It's all toward the zero footprint of 2020?
I may have a wall heater, but I will soon have solar.
Excellent.
Okay. Yeah, just a couple things. Thank you for verbally going over the impacts. You know, in reading the staff report, it was kind of hard to understand the actual impacts, so I'm glad that you presented those. And I agree with my colleagues, too, that the outreach is going to be important on this one, and especially to the people that are actively doing business. I'm sure you guys know who pulls permits on an active basis. So they'll probably know pretty quick, but I would be concerned about the person that's planning a big remodel and, like, I believe Councilmember O'Neill was really alluding to, and this is going to change their budget. So maybe if there's anyone that's been in contact recently about big permits that you might think as a residential homeowner, it might be good proactive customer service to reach out to them, but I'm sure you've already thought of that as well.
We've been talking this up already, as you know. We've been preparing for this for some time, and now, you know, the reality is here. So we'll do our level best to continue to have that conversation with folks coming through the counter, that call us on the phone, but also, you know, update our websites and have, you know, as many handouts as we possibly can that will help people, you know, finance their projects in the future.
Great, excellent. So we'll go to the public on this one. Do we have any cards, Chief? All right, great. So--
We'll open the public--
We'll open the public hearing. There's no cards here, so we'll close it, bring it back to council. What's the pleasure of council here? Councilmember O'Neill?
I move that we adopt the ordinance before us. I've lost the page.
It's here.
I, let's see. I do know how to make him an ordinance. Okay. Adopt a resolution, let's see. Move to introduce ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council, Pacifica, Repealing Chapters 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 21." Title 8, title, number 2, number 4, 5, 6, 8, 21, again. And repealing Article 1 of Chapter 3, Title 4, the Pacifica Municipal Code, and adding thereto a new Article 1, fire code, and making amendments thereto by the title only and waive reading beyond the title. Thank God.
Mayor Protem?
I'll second, and I just wanted to make one comment. If, as we're doing this, we could somehow get that summary also up on the webpage so that builders and stuff could see it there, that would be great.
We will start tomorrow.
Okay?
Great, please vote. And that passes five to zero?
I think there's another--
The second part?
There is a second part.
Would you like to do that, too? Councilmember O'Neill?
Okay, number two. Adopt a resolution rescinding administrative policy number 38, per entice city fire flow tables, notes, and sample forms referenced in Pacifica Municipal Code.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
Okay, please vote. And that passes five to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
All right. Council Communications is next. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just have a few things that I wanted to share with the council from C-KAG and a couple other little things that I did. We had at the City and County Association of Governments quite an extensive presentation from BG&E. And my understanding is that the city managers and public works directors, maybe, got that same presentation. I don't know if yours was as controversial as ours, but it was interesting to be my first meeting to referee. But I will say that I am pleased with one thing. They have a decent map of the transmission lines. And I have it, and I'm happy to share it with anybody that wants it. And it does show the transmission line that comes into the back of the oddstead. And I don't know if you remember, but I don't let them forget very soon, when I get them in front of C-KAG, is that that was controversial when it happened. Was it there? Wasn't it there? It was there. They told us it wasn't there. Then they sent out an announcement to the community after we reassured the community that it wasn't there, that it was there. So this is not something that I've let them forget. They sent new players, and those were consistently, oh, I don't know, eviscerated in some way by the city council members. And I will tell you, the one thing consistently that gets asked for, and I can't say that I disagree, is that we've been asking for some time for some assessment of the risk on the lines, and they have yet to provide that to anybody. And so it goes forward. I have no idea if that came up for you, but it's not that we want to say whether it leaks or doesn't leak. They aren't certainly going to, but what is the risk to a given line for a neighborhood? Is there ways to assess that? And they have not been able to come forward with that. So that was somewhat disappointing. But they are taking everyone on lovely tours of the new operations center, if anyone, you all got your invitations, I'm sure. So I just wanted to share that with you all. I also did the administrative meeting for the next City and County Association of Governments meeting today. And just for public works, there will be, the new call will come out probably after we vote on it. We're going to be voting on it for shuttle funds and shuttle money. I also want to congratulate councilmembers O'Neill and Irvin for their election, as we expected, to their respective subcommittees in Legislative and Congestion Management. And there's some other things, but basically, it's fairly mild. It's the year-end budget stuff. So if you want to know about the funds and things, this next, for the City and County Association of Governments, this next agenda would have all those in it. So it's a good time to kind of get a sense, because it'll have the audits, all of those pieces, and there's money that comes from a number of different sources. Two of the most controversial things are, of course, stormwater, which is, we're losing our funding for. So that's why C-KAG is looking at another alternative funding source, whether it's a revenue measure or something. And then, really, the most controversial, for some strange reason, is safe routes to schools. Mainly because there's not been a consistent way to assess those. And whether or not the money that we're spending with the schools, and we do it through the Department of Ed now, we just turned it over to them, but we're not clear if it's making a difference or not. So two grants come up, or two items come up on the next agenda, and I anticipate they'll get pulled from the consent agenda and discussed thoroughly once again, until we come up with some way of measuring that. Also, I will be attending the Association of Bay Area Governments on the 5th, and I wanted to make sure that if you haven't, I know that Councilmember O'Neill was there, and Councilmember DeGruy came in, and I assume you got yours. But animal licensing, animal control and licensing gave a really decent presentation of the whole kind of structural, financial component of it, and to the City and, or the Council of Cities last Friday. It was a decent presentation. Yeah, nobody let anybody really jump in with, well, everybody jumped in, that's the problem. So it was hard to get through the presentation. But the bottom line that is kind of important is that they're trying to figure out how to fund this new building that they need to do. And the bottom line is, there is no elected oversight on anything that's related, no offense to staff, but it's all about staff being on these committees and no accountability in terms of the public. So you heard a lot of council members, and you guys might have a different take on it, but I think that's one of the key elements. But I did bring a copy, you know, in case people wanted that. And those are my reports on what's currently going on in terms of some of the committee work that I do in the county. But I will also say that I want to wish everyone a very, very happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your families and friends and all the people in your lives. Thanks.
Councilmember Irvin?
Okay. I attended the Library Foundation with the City of Pacifica, along with Mayor Stone. It was a really informative meeting, just talked about moving forward, budget concerns, moving forward, things like that. It was a good discussion that we had together. I also attended the Pacific Coast Television Telethon last night, which was a lot of fun. I know that they're working hard at garnering funds to help the infrastructure at PCT. So I encourage all of you to watch and support PCT whenever you can. I also attended a ribbon cutting for Linda Fahey's studio. I think most, everybody was there as well. And it really just struck me how many talented artists and entrepreneurs we have in Pacifica. And just, we have so many opportunities to shop locally, so I really encourage everybody to, when you're doing your Christmas shopping, to consider shopping here in town. It's just an amazing assortment of gifts and restaurants and things like that available, and it's really great to support our own community.
Councilmember DeGruy?
All right, also ditto on the Thanksgiving, but also recognizing that for some people, holidays can be an extremely difficult time, and there are people available to help with coping. But hopefully, everybody's holidays will be great. And the historic, our very energetic historical society did have another event, this time was on the railroad-- was on the railroad car, and they had two specialists on Ocean Shore Railroad with fascinating, very fascinating pictures, and you can see it on PCT's footprints, it's well worth watching, very incredible information. I attend the Traffic Congestion Alliance, and the millennials are really causing quite some changes when it comes to congestion management, and in particular, because of the way they want to travel or don't want to travel. So there's some unique ways between shuttles and zip cars and those type of things that are beginning to emerge, and you'll hear more about them, which is very fascinating. Also, on the news recently, is yesterday, I think NBC had a specialist on traffic congestion. Again, they mentioned the millennials and how they want to drive or not is having a great effect on potential transportation, and car dealers are saying that within three years, possibly, that they will have the internal driving congestion management within their vehicles. I think emergency vehicles already have them, if are, are close to it, if not, I'm pretty sure they have them. And that Caltrans also, I just heard, is planning to spend millions on revamping the sensors in the streets, and yet even the sensors in the streets are considered to be very passe within a couple of years, so it's very, very fascinating information going on that. Just a reminder that the communications study session will be here on December 3rd at 6 o'clock, and that the Coastal Commission rotates where it meets in California, and they will be in San Francisco on December 11th. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember O'Neil.
First off, I was also at the ribbon cutting, it said Rayner Delmar, the Yonder Shop, and she had quite a bit of different and interesting items at her shop there. I also was one of the auctioneers at the PCT Telethon, and some people picked up some great bargains there from local merchants, and kind of echoing what Karen said, this is Small Business Saturday, and Pacifica, that's like a thing made for Pacifica to go support our many, many small businesses that really do donate to people like PCT, the many PTOs and other nonprofits in town, and they can't keep donating unless somebody helps and patronizes their business, and especially this Saturday on Small Business Saturday. I also attended the Council of Cities Dinner, where we heard about the Humane Society and their building, and that is going to be an interesting discussion when we get down the road. I also did attend my first meeting of the Congestion Management Environmental Quality, and I actually had quite a presentation about the stormwater dilemma, so to speak, and what they're doing, and how they are being proactive. There was also another part of the presentation that I would really like to see us talk about as, there's been a lot of focus on the Beach Boulevard development, but they also talked about the Grand Boulevard Initiative on El Camino, and it wasn't so much, we aren't a PDA priority development area, however, a lot of the stuff that they talked about and used to model the prime development area in the Grand Boulevard could be transferred to Palmetto, and I think that would definitely be worth a study session for the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Committee, I guess, in the new year, and she's supposed to be emailing me the PowerPoint, but it really went into some areas that I think would be good for the council and both those committees, one's a committee, one's a commission, huh? Or, yeah, one's a committee and one's a commission, to look at as a joint session and kind of start working on the rest of Palmetto. And that way, if the budget allows, and we hire an economic development coordinator, we're not doing this linear, but we're doing it in a fashion that we could give him or her some support. So I would like to request if we could get that on the calendar, and I'll go over it with you, Lori, beforehand.
Mayor Protem, do you want to chime in real quick?
I just wanted to follow up, because two of us can say something about this. I actually agree and think that this is fortuitous time, because we're just beginning the cycle for the next PDAs, and I would include Sharp Park and the Greater Eureka Square in that. I wouldn't just keep to Palmetto, but look to both sides in terms of what we could amass for a PDA potentially in the future. So I see that George left, but I know you'll communicate that, Lori. Thank you.
Great. Okay.
Can I just, I was just going to say, we might even want to consider a lot of Palmetto in manor, too, because a lot of the attributes they looked at and they mentioned in this is something that I think could be, not so much the actual ideas, but the mythology and what they did could be transferred to probably pretty most of Pacifica.
Great. Wonderful. I'm glad everyone is involved with these committees, and I think it's great to be bringing back these things that are really important, and also have a lot of financial ties and availability out there, and I think that's when we met with our last school study session, we realized that, and it's exciting to hear a lot of the things come back and be very fruitful, potentially, here for Pacifica. So December 6th, at 5:30 is the tree lighting at the community center put on by the city. Hope you all can make it, it's a great event, and afterwards is a great elf market, so if you want to.
Is it the 6th?
It's the 6th, December 6th. And afterwards, there's a lot of different vendors there selling really, really cool things that are local. I think last year, we got some excellent jam there, so there's wonderful things, everything from jam to honey to socks to all sorts of cool things for gifts, so I hope you all enjoy that. And then we have a second Christmas tree lighting on the 8th, and that's down at Rockaway, and that's the one that the Chamber of Commerce puts on, and that starts at 4:00 PM, goes all the way to 8:00 PM. Great event for kids, and it's growing and growing every year, and I believe we're going to have a celebrity Santa Claus possibly there, by one of our members here, so you can guess which one. I'm glad Councilmember DeGruy mentioned the council study session on the 6th, which is for the communications plan, that'll be, that's December 3rd at 6:00 PM here at Council Chambers, and, you know, that's been a long time coming, we've been working on that for a long time, former councilmember Jenny Jakewood and myself. It's been about a year, so really excited about that, and looking forward to, you know, having the city take our communications to the next level, and it should be, hopefully the meeting itself is really, and kind of a first step in that, so really excited to see what the action plans will be from that. That's all I have, and of course, have a wonderful Thanksgiving. All right, that brings up oral communications from the public. Do we have any speakers tonight? Any cards? I know the 49ers are playing on Monday Night Football, so that might have slowed down some people. All right, so I'll close oral communications from the public, and I believe that is our only, that is our last agenda item. All right, have a wonderful holiday. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.